Welcome, everyone. Today is September 22nd. It is 6:32, and this is the Planning Board of Acushnet. This meeting is being recorded for the Acushnet YouTube channel and also via Zoom. If everyone could please put their phones on silent, that would be greatly appreciated. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
I make a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Any of us. I'd like to have everybody introduce themselves. Doug, can you start, please?
Doug from Muntle Townplanner.
Steve Boucher, member.
Mark Francois, chairman.
Brian Dishamps, member.
Rick Ellis, vice chairman.
And I got a phone call from Dave De Biggnan. He is on his way. Just gonna be a little late. Next. Minutes. Did everybody get a chance to read the September 8th minutes that Doug sent out to everybody?
Yep. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the minutes from September 8th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, you can.
I can't.
Or...
No, no, no.
I have the meeting minutes from the 25th with the corrections that need to be made.
All right, yeah.
Those two.
Can we sign them now?
Yeah. Larry made the motion at last meeting to approve of the changes. And these are the two from September 8th.
And these are the two from last month.
Yep. Those are the two from September 8th.
Mark, there's actually one subdivision in town, older subdivision with the paper streets and all that stuff, that does not even have legal access to a town road.
We'll get to that.
I could show you that on the official town map when you are... If you are so inclined.
I would like to see it. All right, we're gonna move on to discussions and other topics. At this time, I am going to have to recuse myself. I'm gonna ask the vice chair to take over this next formy partial covenant.
Will do.
And I will return one computer.
Yeah, we do. I mean, this is all like old business. I mean...
Okay.
There's no public hearing involved, so it's not a matter that he hasn't done here for the public hearing. It's a matter that can stand on its own. He's gotten his approvals. He's done some road construction. Now, he would like release of some of the lots.
Right, I get that. I just wasn't sure about...
But, yeah, but he can, like I said, as long as we have to fill him in on what has happened to date. And then he's as able to vote on it as any of the other members.
I did the drive-by. I had some time to take a look at it. I had some questions for Doug that we ran through and...
I mean, the thing is, it wouldn't work any other way. Some of these covenant releases come five and 10 years after, you know, there's some road construction there. And there's no way you could guarantee that it's gonna be the same people sitting, you know, that sat five years ago that are sitting today. I mean, just practically, it doesn't work. I mean, Mr. Francois had a proposal in front of the planning board before he was on the board. The board approved some roadway construction that would allow them to develop additional lots out and back. Now, he's done some of that road construction, and he's asking for some releases of lots. So, the board has got to act on whether they think there are enough lots still held in surety to ensure the construction of the road or the complete construction of the road. And I will add, this has nothing to do with Mr. Francois. We have had difficulty getting the rest of the construction done at times. If there, in my own view, if there isn't plenty of incentive to do that last bit, it's just like you're trying to finish up the last part of your kitchen improvement project that you've been working on. That last bit is tough, but it's important that it get done so that the people that are buying the lots get the road that basically they were promised. So, that said, I'm gonna ask Doug for, basically, a report from him, you know, what remains to be done. Is the board public works satisfied with the cost estimate to finish the work that remains to be done? And I would just put up for discussion, and whoever's representing Mr. Francois, because of problems we've had in the past, getting the last bit of the road construction done. I would, before we even talk about a release of lots, I would like to talk about a time, a end of time that the road constructions, the road construction will be completed. 10 years from today is not a good number for me. 10 days from today is probably a little too quick, but there certainly ought to be something in the middle there that the three members here can agree to.
For the record, Matt Leoni with Schneider De Biggnan Leoni, here to represent Mr. Francois with this matter, and I can address those questions that you have, Mr. Ellis. Just to catch the board up, this is Perry Hill Estates on the north side of Perry Hill Road. What has happened here is we have a four-lot subdivision. One of the lots is the existing residence for Mr. Francois, which leaves three available lots for sale. There's been a road constructed from Perry Hill to an existing gravelway that's about 12 to 15 feet wide at this point, that's being utilized to access the rear lot over here on so-called Trips Way. At this stage, the road of construction, the road has been developed from Perry Hill to this gravel traveled way, as I said. I believe Mr. Menard from the DPW has looked at it and has written a letter to the board stating that he has had a chance to be out there and look at it. As of right now, we now have access to all three lots. The remaining construction that needs to be done is the paved apron in the front, the shaping of the drainage structures, as well as some ditching to get the water to convey into those drainage structures. And we have proposed to regrade and widen the existing roadway all the way up to Trips Way. I know our plans do show it only ending at the highway. I mean, excuse me, at our road layout here, but it will be extended to the turnaround at Trips Way and the construction of the Hammerhead. As far as the timeframes that Mr. Ellis was asking about, Russ DuBois from Parkside Excavation is doing the work on the project. He has said that work shall be completed this fall, well, as a long-term estimate. It's hoping within the next couple of months that...
Before the first of next year?
Absolutely, yes. And the only thing that won't be completed by that time will be the seed, final seeding on the and planting of the wetland replication area and the drainage ponds.
Before you go any further, now, I'm assuming at this point that you've got an order of conditions that requires that these things be done...
Yes.
Anyway.
That's correct.
Over and above what the planning board wants to have done.
That is correct. Yep. And, you know, additionally, the road has been, you know, Mark has said that he has actually seen it in a good storm flow already, and it is conveying water well. And I don't know if you guys had a chance to go out there and drive it, but I think Russ has done a great job so far getting it to that point. And again, to your timeframe question, Mark's been waiting, I think it's three years this October to get this project up and running and get things rolling. He was hung up in court for some other issues that really delayed it, so I think speed is of the essence, and I think...
It's more, Matt, from my perspective, it's more a matter of people are gonna buy lots, and they expect to see some semblance of a road in front of their place.
Absolutely.
When their house is up, at least, not five years later.
Yeah.
We've had that problem with other subdivisions.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I know.
I think what makes this one a little bit more unique is that there is no underground drainage to be put in. There's no catch basins or manholes or culverts that need to be placed. There's no waterman going in. This is gonna be septic and wells, so there's really no infrastructure that's gonna need to be torn up and, you know, those are the kind of things that take a long time. There's no top coat for pavement because it's a gravel surface, so we're not waiting for those types of things. Usually, the things, as Mr. Ellis was mentioning, that get kind of left to the end. I think here, we're looking at a straight gravel road, and what needs to be done is really dressing up and improving the existing way that's already providing access for large trucks and construction equipment at this point.
Ultimately, we don't want the fire department or the police department to come back and say, "These guys didn't do everything that they promised to."
Correct.
"Why didn't you make them do it?"
Absolutely.
You know, that's... So, if there is a Hammerhead that's supposed to be constructed back there...
Yes.
You know, that needs to be done sooner rather than later.
Right, I will add also on the Hammerhead, it will be done. It's part of that proposal I said that would be completed by this fall, but there's also a turnaround provided in Trips Way. So, if there was an emergency situation between now and the Hammerhead being done, there is already access for turnaround that's been provided.
I understand. You know, again, if I'm buying a lot on a road, even if it's a gravel road, I'm gonna expect to see it look like what you was on the plan.
Absolutely.
And if one of those houses starts planting their lawn, their finished lawn, where the Hammerhead is supposed to be, well, then that's an issue, too.
Well, I think part of this is that he does have these two lots under agreement already.
Which two?
The ones he's asking for to be released, one and three. And I think part of this is that those people wanna start getting their, you know, planning done, their house plans drawn up. They wanna start getting Board of Health approvals. They wanna start going to CONCOM. And at this point, they don't wanna invest any more money into it because they don't actually own the lots yet, which is a reasonable concern. So, I think that, you know, there is really no, they're still in the infancy of having anything completed at this point. They just wanna get to a point where they can start planning and investing more money into the project. So, I wouldn't foresee any construction being done on any of these lots prior to the road being completed.
Which lot has got the Hammerhead on it?
It would be Lot 1.
You know, that would... Is that where his pile is out there today? So, it was partially cut out already?
I think there is...
The clearing in there somewhere?
There is some clearing down there. I'm not sure how far Russ go out with roughing it out and getting it ready, but...
My problem is, if that lot owner puts his lawn in, and now the Hammerhead needs to be constructed, I understand what you're saying, but we can't control when things get done. I don't want that lot owner back in here asking for relief from the Hammerhead because he's already planted his lawn there.
I mean, my...
Or he's planning on planting his lawn.
My response to that would be that if he does get any engineering plans done, which you will need to submit to the town and to the Board of Health and to Conservation, the roadway will be shown on there as proposed. So, if they were to do any construction or plan any construction within the Hammerhead or within the roadway, that would be, you know, a mistake on the engineers and a mistake on their part. I don't see the fact that it not being physically there being an issue.
It's, yeah. I mean, it's always, what's the line? It's easier to ask for forgiveness and permission. I, you know, we've been on the forgiveness side of a lot of requests over the last decade or so.
I'm sure.
Or multiple decades.
I'm sure.
So, when I was out there today, I'm gonna say it was probably Trips Way on the very end over there. She's got a private property sign sitting right there, so...
Yeah.
What was with the, as far as turning around?
Was there gates on the front of that property, too, no?
No, I didn't see any gate, but I just saw a private property sign, so I stopped and backed up from that point, so...
It is my understanding that that is a layout that would have allowed for access from this roadway, if there was an emergency turnaround need. There's a subdivision plan on record that shows that.
And how much of that road needs to be, I mean, obviously, there's...
How much of it needs to be widened?
They're gonna widen it all the way from where the transition is all the way up to Trips Way, which is above and beyond what was originally proposed. And like I said, it's just a matter of widening it and regrading it. Very, very minimal grade changes that are gonna occur.
Been a clean up...
Do it next week? No, I'm just kidding.
I do believe that, you know, that's the intent. I know Russ has a couple of jobs he has to finish up, and he's bringing his machine over there to get work on this, to finish it up.
There's a lot of cleanup to do alongside the edge of the road, right there?
Absolutely.
The drainage, right there.
Yep. There's a lot of stumps and stones that have to be removed. He included in his estimate, just to run through the numbers with you guys, to finish up the road, which would include the pond shaping that we talked about, the wetland replication area, the regrading, including the Hammerhead. He had $28,000 miscellaneous, which would include the removal of the stumps and the stones at $4,000. The asphalt entrance is, we have a proposal here as well, I think it's been furnished to the board at $6,000. It's a total of 38. If we say it's 40, we're looking at about $40,000 to complete the project. I know Mr. Menard has looked at that. In his letter, he does state that he agrees with that estimate being reasonable.
Where are the stuff piles of stumps and rocks now?
They're along the side where the drainage ponds are gonna be.
On the way in.
On the way in.
All right. Conservation will also be on...
Absolutely.
...to be...
And I mean, it's an eyesore. I mean, he wants to clean it up, and it'll definitely be...
It would hurt the marketing of the last lot.
Absolutely.
Now, that last lot, I assume that's had percolation tests done on it that have passed?
All three lots have been percolated, yes.
And line for uplands, everything that's...
Yep. The wetland line has been delineated and has been approved by the Conservation Commission, so, yeah.
Is there any reason that you can think of that would make that not a building lot in terms of topography or percolation or septic system design or anything like that?
No, nothing. I see it as one of the better lots in the development. They're all good lots, but there's really no great issues there. I've walked it. I've been out there, and, yeah, I think both of these lots will be nice. And just as it, we value the lots at around $180,000 to $200,000 apiece, and that's based upon the offers and the agreements that have been already in place for lots 1 and 3. So, that puts us at about four, almost five times the amount with the one lot held back as to what the construction cost to finish the project would be.
Delicate situation, but we are, I will be looking to see that road in place before the end of the year. Whatever he's gotta do with Mr. Frayd, you know, just do it. Stop paying him or something.
You mean Russ DuBois?
Russ.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. He's the one doing the excavation work, yeah.
Anything else?
Well, which, when is he looking to release that 2 on the top?
2?
1 and 2 or 1 and 3?
He's looking to have 1 and 3 released now. 2 would be the one that would be held in surety until the board is happy and that everything has been completed to their liking.
And is the final occupancy dependent on that road being finished? Is that what that would be?
We have no, we have no, we have no lever there. The only lever we have is the holding of the lot, and that's it. If it's a valuable lot, then eventually it'll get developed. I would just like to see that. This is not a difficult road construction or a drainage construction. I just wanna see it done, and I don't want people coming back to us looking for exceptions, you know, elimination of Hammerheads, whatever.
Again, this is a situation where the applicant lives on the road and lives in the neighborhood. It's not like some offsite developer. I mean, he lives here. I think his goal is to make it as nice as possible.
I understand.
And get the most value out of the lots. And I think the way to do that is to, as you said, to create a road and an environment that people are gonna wanna move into.
Anybody ready to make a motion?
If we release just one of the two lots, right, he can be back, you can be back here in a month, two months, right? If this truly gets, if work on road gets done, right?
If he's got two sales pending, I mean, there's...
If he, I mean... Rising interest rates.
Yeah, who knows? I mean, there's a sale, and then there's a sale pending, and they're two different animals altogether.
Yeah.
I mean, there's still one lot. It's obviously worth far more than, you know, the cost of building a little gravel road and doing some drainage improvements, which the Conservation Commission is gonna be leaning on him to get done anyway. You know, there are other penalties available if that isn't done, as some other developers have found out with solar arrays, but that's another whole issue. I'll entertain a motion to allow a release of, what is it, lots?
1 and 3.
1 and 3?
Yeah.
I second that motion.
Well, I can't make that on the vice chairman.
Oh, that's right. I make a motion to release lots 1 and 3. I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
I just need you guys to sign these documents. This is the video, just to write your... And then, when I get these to the town clerk tomorrow, I'm gonna need one of you to come in to have it notarized with your signature.
Well, I...
Yeah, there's two.
I'll be around in the morning.
Okay, yeah.
But not in the afternoon.
Yeah, I have a 9 o'clock board assignment, so...
I get to sign?
No, just sign. Yeah, just sign.
I gotta pretty much have to scribble some...
After lunch, I'm headed to Connecticut, so...
Oh, there we go.
I'll give him a mic.
I can go get Mark real quick now that we've wrapped up.
Okay. Just let me know when it's ready. You've got my cell phone number?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Just let me know when it's ready, and I'll swing by and... Doug, you want me to sign this now or wait?
I'm gonna need your signature on the normal planning board area, and then we'll have to sign it again with the town clerk to have it notarized.
Okay. Fair enough.
Look where I found the loitering on the...
Sitting in my seat. I kept a nice and warm one.
Oh, no. I switched.
Oh, you switched them now?
I switched, dude.
Big man move.
Was it 1 or 2? Sorry. It's 2.
Okay. I will secede my term as vice chairman of the meeting and send it over to you, Mr. Frayd.
Well, I'll take it back over. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda is A and R 2022-01, the land on Zero Lake Street, Acushnet Mass, Riverhawk Lancer is, Middlewark Mass, drawn for Long Plain Cranberry Trust and Cranston Acres Nominee Trust.
All right? Everything's pretty straightforward at this point with the plans. I'll put it up here for them.
I'll just look at this on the computer.
They included everything that the...
Oh, they were going over.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. So, they included everything that the board requested with the notes on the plan, delineation of what lots are being included into what.
Now, it's clear we got two lots.
Yep. And they dotted the old stuff to see that it's old, and they got both lots, both mentioned that they are not building lots.
Oh, board have a note on them, yes.
Anybody have anything they'd like to say? Dave?
Motion to approve the plan.
Motion to approve the plan?
Second.
Is there a second?
I have a question. Can I discuss? My name is Joe Amarillo. I'm owner of Leven Crane Drive, and I just have some questions about the subdivision. May I approach? My first question is, I went to the insistence office, and I got this blueprint here, which is the comment, where did lots 1A, 1B, where did all this come from relative to the 38 and the 38E? Now, how did this turn into this?
So, 38?
Yep.
Which this zigzag line means that these are assessed all at 1?
Yep, this is 1.
So, the roads really don't mean anything?
Okay, this is, I agree.
So, 38 is this line right through here?
Okay.
So, 1A and 1B are basically a redivision of 38?
They just didn't state it on here, so that's why I was wondering how this come on.
It'd be too confusing for them to try and put that on there. And then, this 38A, 38E, essentially, there's a division. Let's see if I got my variance right. Yeah, we got 1B and 1A are division of this, and then this is gonna be combined.
1B.
1B, okay. So, this one is being divided in two, and then this one is taking this little piece.
Yep, now it's 1.
And then, the rest is just gonna be 1B.
Okay. Now, are these existing bogs already, or are they gonna put them in? Because I remember as a kid, I thought there was at least one bog.
No, they were outbogs, yeah.
These two are already bogs. So, the question I have is, what is the intent of extending Cranston Drive? Are they putting a development in here?
There's nothing, nothing for...
No, there's no determination.
Well, because it says here, until the Cranston Drive is...
Yes, it has to be upgraded. This lot in itself is not even considered a building lot.
That's because Cranston Drive isn't done yet.
Correct. They have to build it out, come in with a Form C subdivision in order to develop this into whatever, one lot.
So, they could, they, my question is, if they ever decided to put a subdivision in there, they would have to finish this road?
There'd have to be improvements, right?
Yeah, they'd have to be. They'd have to improve.
Because that's my concern. I remember when they were digging all this out, and there were truck tractor trails coming in and out, construction going on, and it was just a big dust pit for a long, long, long time. And, you know, I just don't want that to happen again, as I'm currently, I own 11, and I'm in the process of buying my mom's house, 12 Cranston Drive. So, you know, I'm just concerned, if there's upgrades to the road, I'm all for it. If they're gonna have all kinds of construction and the road's not upgraded, and it's gonna be a dust, you know, that's my concern.
That would be a whole separate process. All we're doing right now is letting him redivide that same piece of property and not create any new building lots. So, based on this plan, there's no new lots or there's no new houses that can be constructed once we sign this plan.
Okay, so...
Absolutely none. That doesn't prevent him from coming back in the future...
No, well, that's it.
You know, with a subdivision proposal...
He would have to come up with a new plan.
Yes.
Is that true?
Yeah, it's newly notified.
It was a whole process with a butter notification, public hearings, the whole thing.
Well, I didn't get a notification for this, that's why.
Because it's a formy.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand the process, and then my last question would be, on Lot 1A, what was the reason for doing this jog? Is that to have access to the backside of this lot?
It's really not relevant to us.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, it's just, they can move the lines around all over.
Because that's what it looks like. Why would they change this lot to this size, all to have access through Cranston Drive to the backside? Wouldn't you mind?
It's not relevant outside of...
Yeah, it's not relevant to what we're doing here. I mean, if he owns the property, he can drive whatever he wants on his own property.
I agree with that, but they're gonna come through Cranston Drive to do it. That's my concern.
Which, yeah, was part of the original division of land, yeah.
But as this stands, they can't build any houses on it.
Yeah, I'm not always actually building a house. I'm more of what's gonna happen to wait now or in the future with what Cranston Drive is in the condition it is in today. That's what I'm concerned with, that. If he wants to come in and put nice houses down there and make it, I'm all for it. I just wanna make sure that Cranston Drive is gonna be a finished road, and you're not gonna have construction and dirt and dust and flying around. I've been through it before, and that's what I'm, I'm trying to...
Want me to answer something? You want me to answer something, Brian?
I mean, it, like I said, that's, that's all kind of irrelevant to us signing this plan.
Okay.
The only thing that is gonna, that is going to happen from us signing this plan, it will enable them to shift land to different parties.
Okay.
That's all.
Yes, sir.
In, in terms of future bog construction, that, this has got nothing to do with that, that's a separate process.
I just wanna understand.
Well, while he's here, and he's willing to answer some questions.
You're obligated to, if you want to.
No, no, I, I...
But you can't if you want.
He's a neighbor, why not answer your question?
Mr. Richard died.
Yep, I know Brian as well.
So, alright.
Good.
Basically, Janet is gonna be grabbing this piece, and they did that little piece right here, I don't know if you, that's what you appointed?
Well, yeah, I'm like, why?
That was because they wanted enough land to keep it in the chapter, in agriculture.
Six, chapter sixty-one A?
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, so we gave them a little extra, and it was gonna end over here somewhere. We gave them a little extra. Your sister Carrie is gonna own this pot, okay? There's still a cranberry bog here, it can be still worked. There's someone out in the distance that was looking to buy a piece of land, and basically keep it a farming type of thing. And I came here before with the plans, so basically, the right away to get to here is through here.
Yep.
And I know you must be next to the fence, right?
Yeah, right after that gate right there, that's my house, my mom's, I grew up on that street.
I think I met you one time.
Yeah, one time down there, having a run in.
And the pastor church is over here, so basically, nothing's gonna change, except somewhere around here, maybe there's gonna be a turnaround at some given time, and if it's perccable, it can only perk over here, where it's high, and the rest of this...
I know, that's all dug out, that's all.
Yeah, it can, it could do it, but basically, if, if anything ever happens, this is only gonna be a one lot subdivision, like one back lot, if anything, and it would be right here the house, and this would be, what was the reason for putting these streets in?
Paper road streets.
No, that's from...
That's from previous.
From before, and that confuses...
I was, I was in grade school when that was done, I'm seventy years old now, so...
I'll go from...
There's, there's called a paper street.
That's what it was gonna be, and it was confusing to the lawyers, it was confusing to everybody, I kept on telling them to wipe all that out.
It looks like a subdivision.
It's confusing, so, so is the circles, everything, so some of them got wiped out, this will probably get wiped out for the next time, maybe, but, but it, it is hard when you're looking at things, and you don't see, and then they, when I came back here, they made me put some dotted lines, the engineer guy, he had to, and, and I can understand that, but it's confusing, but there's, there's nothing confusing.
So, the intent is to leave this as bogs, and possibly extend the bogs out to this area?
I don't think so, maybe, if the guy wants to do it, there ain't no money in bogs.
There ain't no money in cranberries, no.
But the guy's, he's an agricultural kinda guy, likes farming animals and stuff, and I don't know, he's kinda old, but like, maybe he builds a house for his daughter or something, I don't know. Maybe that's what he was talking about, but...
But he, even, even building a house, based on us signing this plan, he doesn't, he doesn't even have the house.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, that might be better for you, the way you're explaining it, because if there's a house there, there's not gonna be another bog, you know, regardless of how the financing, how the finances change over the, over the years with cranberries, you know, for all we know, it may cycle around to be a lucrative thing again, and they'll be out, and whoever owns it'll be out there digging a bog, but if there's a house there, well, then no one's gonna dig a bog.
See, and actually, they're our cranberries, they grow a lot, so that you can rejuvenate with not too much bother.
Did you get all the answers, questions answered?
Yeah, I just, I'm just watching out for the road, that's all, because I've been through it before, so.
Yeah.
Alright, that's, so they would have to do something with Cranston Drive if, if something, if it were to happen.
It would have, it would have to be a whole new set of plans.
Okay.
You would be notified, it would have to come in front of the board again, it would have to go through the whole subdivision rules and regs.
Alright, that's fair enough.
And then you'd be notified, and you'd be able to see it.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, we had a motion, we had a second. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We did have a motion.
We had a motion, cool.
We had a second, and...
One. All the plans together, and...
I think that's the only time I've been able to pitch a new house as being a positive thing with a neighbor, usually hits the other way around.
It's in my heart.
You wanna start here? Alright.
Use a regular pen.
Yep.
Use a regular pen, and my heart, so I'll give you a my heart, and our copy of it, or actually, I have to bring it, I have to bring it to the town clerk's office.
I don't know how that works.
You have to.
I'll, I'll bring it to the town clerk's office, you can pick them up to the town clerk.
You'd have to punch them all into the stamps.
Yeah.
He takes them by the...
Yeah, I'm taking everything.
He's taking them down here, something level. They all move up in hands, and...
Oh, okay. It's a technicality, you can come get it tomorrow, I guess.
Yeah, sorry about that. You can come grab it from the town clerk's tomorrow.
Alright.
Yeah, is that okay?
You want me to bring it down there?
No, I'll, tomorrow morning, he'll be here, I'll be dropping it off to her office, and she'll, she'll hold on to everything. Whenever, after, after eight-thirty, she should have everything all set for you.
I give her more time than that, she's done.
I see you struggling with them papers, man.
Oh, reaching up on the top file cabinet.
That's pretty powerful on the table, man, I tell you, I told her that.
I was curious why they go so far out with these things.
They have all the documents.
Does it, does it couple meetings before then?
Well, you just have the public hearing meeting next week, and then we have the regular scheduled planning board meeting after that.
Right, so they're going to, like, three?
Well, it's more, we're skipping on to the last one we had in October, so we have two scheduled for October.
Hey, Brian, this swap pen's, that's my personal favorite.
Okay, no problem.
You were, you were with us with a couple of these conversations, and that's all. The system was a record, and...
Yeah.
And break, brought up, yeah.
Yeah, I, I couldn't think of the reasons I have to put it on there.
Yeah, I'm good. Okay, so while he's finishing up with that, third on the agenda is this continued discussion of A and R Form A Plan access requirements. Rick had brought up a couple of things that he'd like the board to know, concentrate on, and take into consideration whenever we do. We have an A and R Form A in front of us, a lot of great information, I think the board is all on the same page regarding what you said.
And then, at that point, you can pick them up tomorrow.
That being said...
Tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon.
Does anybody else have anything to add?
Yeah, I have to...
Or are we all...
Write a letter for her.
More or less, I agree with you.
I'm, I'm all set, I mean, I've said what I, what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
You know, basically, each lot's gonna have, each lot that wants to be considered as a building lot, has to demonstrate that ability.
At the time.
At, at the time that we sign it.
Right.
If there are other things that need to be done, you know, special permits for common driveways, you know, wetlands, whatever, you know, to, to make them buildable, well then, when that's done, come on in, and, you know, we'll, I, I would sign the plan. You know, I just, I, I just don't know any other way than to just make it black and white.
No, that was...
You know, it's, and, and, and my, the only thing I would add to that is, it's probably that something in that form should probably be integrated with our requirements for Form A plans. That way, when somebody picks up the package, they know that that is a potential issue when they hire an engineer to, to come up with the subdivision plans.
Good idea. Brian, you good? Oh, I'm good. Steven, you good? Dave?
Yeah, I think Doug should just neuralize it into documents or something, look at it.
That way, like Mr. Friends' wife said, that way, when, when, when the engineer or the surveyor comes in and wants to know what the requirements are, that's in there, in the package, it's right up front, and...
That, that's one of the things that I wanted Doug to work on, I mean, we talked about it, Doug's had his hands full with the, with a lot of these bylaw changes and whatnot, but once this is all set, he's gonna put together basically a checklist of what needs to get done, who you need to see, just to make it easier for the person who is inexperienced and doesn't know.
Mm-hmm.
That will help everybody. Good? Okay, we will be moving on.
I just wanted to say thank you, the girls probably say the same thing, thank you very much.
Okay, and, and thank you for listening to our comments last time, I wanna say that, and, you know, the plans came in, it's exactly what we were looking for, and, yeah.
No problem, so we'll, I'll see you next time when I have to come in with the next question.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see, can I get a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved for the large-scale photovoltaic, photovoltaic bylaw.
There we go, there we go. It's a little bit of a time twist.
The purpose of this bylaw is to permit the creation of new commercial solar photovoltaic installation that has to provide two hundred kilowatt or greater by providing comprehensive standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modifications, and removal of such installations to promote and address public safety and minimize the impact on scenic, natural, and historic resources, and promote public health and welfare. The plans and accompanying documentation are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, parting ways building one thirty, Main Street, first floor during regular business hours. The way this is gonna work, Doug's gonna go through, basically, the, the bylaw, he created it, he's gonna go and talk about it, the planning board can then ask Doug the questions, once the planning board's done, we can go to the public for questions.
I, I'd just like to say one thing first, that this, this bylaw is modeled after a bylaw that was passed in Hopkinton, and that bylaw was approved by the Attorney General. So, it's a, it's, there's a good framework for what we're trying to do here, there are things relative to dimensional requirements, appearance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but it's, it's not something that's brand new and untested, if you will. It is, again, modeled after a very current Hopkinton bylaw that has been approved by the Attorney General. It was like a two or three-page approval with explanation, but it wasn't...
A lot of hesitation on some of their acceptance pieces to what Hopkinton had put forward, I just wanna kind of piggyback off that, so one of the big things Attorney General Massachusetts kinda stated is, we can't restrict it in any district, we, it has to be allowed use in every district, essentially, so I guess we'll, we'll start from there. So, this bylaw is intended for any solar field that is gonna be two hundred kilowatts or greater, looking at what we have permitted, the smallest one that we have permitted is about five hundred kilowatts at this point, and that's on about three acres, I wanna say it is, it's over on Isley. So, just to touch on some of the setback requirements and what this would look like, any commercial solar field, any large-scale solar field that'd be going in, you need a minimum of three acres, not only being a minimum of three acres, it needs to be a three hundred foot setback from any, any acceptable way, as the fund, general, Massachusetts general, chapter ninety, section one, not only that, there would also be a requirement of a hundred fifty foot setbacks for the rear and side, so that kinda covers, there's limited, limited land in a cushion that will kind of allow that, but beyond that, there's, in comparison to what we currently have as a bylaw, it, it doesn't, isn't really doing us a service right now as a community, it's not protecting the health and well-being of the community moving forward, and I, I tried to hit on all those points in what I've created at this point. So, as part of the submission process, any developer coming in would have to hold a pre-submission meeting with town officials, so that'd be myself, building inspector, conservation agent, stormwater agent, DPW director, police chief, fire chief, and they would have a preliminary meeting and, and get our feedback on what needs to be changed within the plans before they approach a planning board. At that point, they have a pre-submission meeting with the planning board, where fees are established at that time, fees that would be established, we're looking at specific public hearing notifications, so the fee for that, what it's gonna cost to send out any of these projects to go out for a third-party review, so just being able to hit all those points, collect the fee at that point in time, and then not have to worry about it beyond there. Right now, in our bylaws, we don't have anything to receive digital copies of anything, so I made that a point, we receive ten hard, oh, eight hard copies, I should say, eight hard copies, and then there should be a digital file, one of the things, since I've started, is create a digital filing system within the planning office, and I just wanna see that continue to move forward, so we have that hit in there, referrals to town boards, that's something that we've previously been lacking, where we'll receive plans, and we don't necessarily have a mechanism for, for a plan to go around to every board and to receive comment, there's a certain period of time that every, every department essentially has an opportunity to provide comment on, on any of the projects, even after the pre-submission meeting, so we have that taken into consideration. So, and then, we move into the site plan application details, and the special permit details that need to be included in any application that we're receiving, so this is where it gets a little bit comprehensive, and we're really hitting on a lot of points here, so looking at some of the things that Hopkinton has done, looking at some of the things that several other towns have done, that have very well-written bylaws at this point in time, so we're looking at glare assessments from it, that would have to be conducted for any solar field, noise studies that would have to be conducted, and that would be at the quietest point of time, and at the loudest point, so during construction, what that sounds like, and what that looks like moving forward for the butters and, and their residences. Not only would be looking at that, I understand there is a, a large concern around tree removal for these projects, and to put a monetary value on, on clearing X number of trees, it's very difficult given, given the current state of the economy, and I, I don't think it's something we'd be able to do and get approved through the Attorney General at this time. So, as kind of a solution to that... So as, kind of a solution to that, what I had saw fit, so any trees that have to be removed, removed in order to create this solar field, it either gets placed in the buffer zone, or they have to identify another location within a cushion where they would have to, the trees that they're removing 12 inches in caliber and greater would have to be planted in that location of a cushion. Not only that, we are looking at engineers or developers coming in with visual renderings from the closest neighboring residence or, or property. So that way, when the solar field is done, we don't have questions of, okay, is the visual, is the visual barrier we had approved going to be sufficient enough to protect this residence from having to, to look at this and having to deal with it on a day-to-day basis? So we hit that point. Utilities and drainage are very straightforward. Another big issue I heard was that there is telephone poles. We have five, six, seven, eight, 10 telephone poles going up on properties, and we have other solar fields permitted in town where they have all of their utilities underground in one telephone pole that comes out at the, at the edge of the site. So that's something we can include in the bylaw, and that's something I did include in the bylaw of having all, all lighting fixtures, all transformers, things like that would have to be placed underground and underground storage facilities, essentially, and everything in terms of wiring being run through the ground, and then they have that one connection pulled out at the site. As I mentioned, the lot containing three acres, 300 feet for the frontage, 150 feet for any rear setbacks. And then we get into the decommissioning form and what that looks like, and I know we've had some previous issues since I've joined town in what decommissioning looks like. So it's, we need it accounted for 20 years, because that's the lifespan of these projects, it's 20 years the solar panels are good for. So including an escalator for 20 years on what it's actually going to cost in today's dollars, but 20 years from now, and any dollar value that we do approve for decommissioning should not, not exceed 125% of the total decommissioning cost of the project. So that will, that would cover our, our basis for the next 20 years, once the project is permitted. I've gotten some questions about how are we monitoring these facilities, and I think it, it's very crucial for us, especially as a lot of these solar fields or solar developments are being sold from one hand to the other, and sometimes even five different times over the lifespan of, of the project. Every applicant and every developer will have to supply an energy assessment, essentially an energy report to the planning board on a yearly basis that notifies the planning board that their panels aren't good standing. That shows us that they're still in operation, even through, throughout a 12-month period. Then even in the commissioning language, I put, if we do not receive a notification that the project is within good standing and within 12-month period, we have the right as a planning board and as a town to pull the bond or pull the cash bond in full at that time to decommission the site and restore it back to its natural state. Other than that, everything is fairly straightforward. I do think there are a lot of differences from what we currently have. Our, our solar bylaw regulations fall under site plan review, which I don't think necessarily addresses a lot of the concerns and, and safety and well-being of the community. I think putting this and approving this at town meeting puts our best foot forward, protects the town moving forward, and as we were all aware, we had approved the 180-day solar moratorium at the last town meeting. I've gotten some questions if we could go back and extend that moratorium. We can't really double dip from, I mean, I've heard from town council, we can't double dip on that, we can't go back and ask the Attorney General, hey, we just, at town meeting, we just approved another 180 days, that's not going to fly, that's not going to work. So in my opinion, being able to adopt this at this point in time, that puts our best foot forward, as I said. And then from fall town meeting, as it's approved, we can gauge how it's doing. If any amendments need, need to be brought forward, that's something we can do at spring town meeting. At least we have some clear-cut regulations in place that will protect the town moving forward, creates clear guidance for the planning board, and it creates clear guidance for, for any developer coming in. That kind of wraps up what I have to say about it.
Any questions? Yeah, you are good.
I, just as, as a comment, from what I've seen over the last two or three years with these solar projects, one of the things that the neighbors are most concerned about is how close some of these things are to their property, and how close some of these solar arrays are to the street. To me, that's one, that's one of the major things that this new bylaw will take care of, and I, we don't have to worry about the Attorney General approving this portion of it or not, and that is, you can't put the solar array within 300 feet of an existing road. That's huge. And you can't put the solar array within 150 feet of a side or rear property line. Right, all the proposals we've got, those arrays and the, the road that circulates around them come almost right up to the property line. Just those two things in of themselves are a tremendous improvement over what we've got now. And, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to vote it in now from my end, you know, just based on the, the feedback we've gotten from neighbors to a couple of these larger projects. I mean, there, there's a lot of other stuff in there that's, that's good also, I mean, the assessment of glare, you know, Doug went through them, I, I'm not going to go through them again, but just literally being able to institute those setbacks is huge. And again, the Attorney General has already approved those setbacks, so when the developer comes in, or before he even comes in, he's got his lines drawn out, okay, we can't go near any of the property lines, and we can't go near the street, this is what we've got left to work with. That's, that's so much of a benefit in my own mind. I, like I said, I'm ready to vote it in today.
Okay. Dave? Anything?
Is there anything in this document that was an add-on from the one that was approved by the Attorney General?
Yes, yes, there is some other stuff I did add in there. In terms of like the restrictions, like setbacks and, and minimum acreage, that is pretty cohesive with what's already been approved through the Attorney General, and I can go back and, and verify that and provide explanations with the planning board.
If, whatever you added, I want to make sure that it's consistent with, like, like Town of Rochester.
Yep.
If you took it from other bylaws that have been approved by the Attorney General.
Yep, absolutely.
Like this tree, one-for-one tree thing?
Yeah.
Was that in Hopk- Hopkinton?
Uh, no, there was not.
Okay. Where did you get that from?
Uh, that was more through my own research and, and exploring what other communities have done.
So I'm not clear on how it's written, whether it's just for access with safety concerns, or is it like Park Drive? They failed to build, right? They came back three years from now and they had to deal with this. They're talking like 40 acres of trees. How could you possibly?
That would be in the determination of the planning board at that time. I think that would be a, a requirement that could be waived if, if it's deemed unfit.
I like it, I just, I wonder if there are some sites that, that may not be.
Excuse me? Absolutely.
Yeah.
Let the, let the Attorney General, you know, tell us about it, you know.
That's why I wanted to make sure that this was one, was that specifically approved by some town through the Attorney General?
Uh, off the top of my head, I'm, uh, it's kind of slipping my mind right now. I do remember reading something along those lines within another neighboring community.
Before it goes to town meeting, we should probably have that answer.
Absolutely.
You'd hate to one, just one excerpt kind of crush the rest of it.
Yeah.
Because we really want this approved.
Perfectly understand. If anybody else is in here relative to this public hearing, the, the approval of the Hopkinton, Hopkinton bylaw by the Attorney General was almost ominous. I mean, if, if a project gets turned down and it doesn't directly affect the health and welfare of the town, the Attorney General's going to overturn it and approve it. You know, it, it's, it's that strong. It specifically says in, in the approval that we understand that, and I'm going to paraphrase here, that neighbors don't like the way it looks, it doesn't matter to us. They're allowed, and you have to let them in. That, and again, that's my paraphrase. Doug shaking his head, yes, I, I think most of the members that have read that approval letter, that's, that's the way it is. So there are, there are really strong limitations on what we can do to deny the project. But this bylaw will let us have it setback from the property lines, setback from the streets, and, and have a lot more input into the, the visual impact, which I, in my own mind, I'm not sure that we can disapprove a project because of that, but it's in the Hopkinton bylaw with that caveat by the, the Attorney General that if you disapprove it, we may change our mind.
Okay. Steven?
Yeah, I think I had mentioned to you, because of acquisitions of these solar fields, is there, should we have some, if, if, not now, but if there's an amendment to be added to cover the fact of that acquisition, that whoever acquires it needs to abide by this particular bylaw, or any improved bylaw?
So we, we already kind of have a, I wouldn't say we have a mechanism in place for us, so we went through this previously, actually. We had two of our, our permitted projects just recently sold, as permitted projects, and it was sold to a new company. I was notified about it, and we, we've moved forward. I have a, a Excel sheet I keep updating along with the assessors in the town clerk's office, that we keep track of all the bylaws, or, or all of the solar fields that are permitted right now. Not only do I believe that the energy assessment would be able to hit on that fact, because it's being submitted from the solar company, so whatever solar company is in operation of that project at that point in time is going to have to provide notifications with the planning board that it's within good standing. So if it does get changed hands throughout the year, we would know about it. Not only that, anytime something gets sold, the assessors are going to end up knowing about it, they get notified about it because the, the person who's selling it isn't going to want to keep paying taxes on a project that they no longer own.
Understood. I guess we're, just to expand on that a little bit, if it gets acquired by another company, are they going to, is this against this bylaw? Say, we get, somebody, applicant comes in, everything passes, goes, seven years down the line, okay, they, they get sold out, are they grandfathered in this bylaw or by, by the one that they were approved by? Or, or can we get, for an amendment, say we amend this to make it a little bit more restrictive or?
We're not going to be able to go back on any of the projects. So if it's permitted under one, one bylaw, we can't go back and have them fall under a new bylaw at that time. So if they're permitted on, so if, right now, we have X number of solar fields that are permitted, we can't have them come back and fall under this bylaw and fall under the modifications or anything of that sort under this one. What this does is protects the town moving forward for any of those.
Yeah, I was referring to, I was going back, and anything underneath this, if there was language in there to just basically, the, the, the next owner would be subject to the most recent bylaw?
I don't think we can do that.
You don't think you can do it?
Okay. But, I mean, but we, what we can do is if they want to change anything at all on that plan, because it's better for them, they've got to come back before us.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that, that's, I mean, we're, we're dealing with that right now on one of the, one of the solar arrays that we've got. If they want to change anything that's shown on the plans or required by the, the conditions of approval, they have to come back. And, and that's the only lever that we have. If you, if there's something that's been a problem from there, well, it's probably time, that's the time we get to introduce it, as other issues that have come up.
Good. Brian?
I'm all set, I think Doug did a great job on this. I think we're covering all our bases now. We're now talking, we're forward with these solar fields and have a little better control on them.
I agree, I agree. I think Doug, you did a, a great job. In my opinion, it covers all the bases. I can't see in a butter finding something that's not in here that would protect them any more than what you already got. I think the way it's written out, I'm, I'm 100% with all the comments that Rick and, and Steve, I, I think you did a great job.
Yes, good job, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have to continue this?
Well, members of the audience. We still have to, but we'll have to continue it, because we have to hold a second public hearing on it, and then I can get some answers about the, the, the tree removal stuff.
Yeah. So now I'm going to go to the. Audience, whether on Zoom or here in the building, if you have any questions regarding the large-scale photovoltaic bylaw.
Great job.
Nobody here? Anybody out in Zoom land that wants to talk about this? Okay, I'll take that as a no. So.
Motion to close the public hearing? Does that?
We'll continue the public hearing.
Can I just, um?
Or continue the public hearing?
Yep.
Can I just ask the question, so?
Sure.
This bylaw, will it affect what's going on in Park Drive?
Um, at this point in time, because it's a permitted project, I do not believe so. That is something I can follow up with and ask legal counsel about, though.
They would have to let the, their permit would have to lapse, and, and then.
So they're already, they're, they're, they're before this bylaw.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah. But if, but like David's saying, if, if they don't get it done in time and their permit lapses, lapses, then they're subject to whatever new bylaw we've got.
When does it lapse?
Uh, Park Drive was permitted about a year ago, so they have, I want to say about another year until their permit would lapse.
One more year? But that has to be approved and final? The bylaw, the new bylaw, right? And then what happens if there's problems with the easement on the, on the road that they're going through to the solar field? Isn't that like going to be a change?
Uh, that's, that's still up in, up, up for debate, we're going to be having a public hearing on that, so I.
Do you know when that public hearing is going to be?
Uh, anticipated for October 20th, still working with, with the developer at this time.
So do we go out of public, back in the public?
Do we have to do it? We have to continue it?
Yeah, continuation to the September 29th meeting, and then.
I would make a motion that we continue this public hearing to October 29th.
September 29th.
September 29th, sorry.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Do I have to make a motion to continue, or we just continue on?
I'd have to open up another public hearing for the residential village rezoning.
I get a motion to open a public hearing for the residential re- village rezoning.
So move.
Dave?
Aye.
Okay. This is to see if the town will vote to amend the town of a cushion official zoning map by rezoning a parcel of land identified in the assessors' record as map 15, lot 482 and 534 from Residential A Zoning District to the Residential Village Zoning District, or take any other action there too. The plans and accompanying documentation are available for inspection at the town clerk's office at Parting Ways Building, 130 Main Street, first floor during regular business hours. Just like the last one, Doug will go through those. No's, the planning board members will ask their questions, and then I'll put it out to the public. Doug?
Yep, so at the May 9, 2022 town meeting, so last time that we had, this article was table. I believe there was just some confusion, some of the language and, and what was actually occurring, so realistically, we are looking to rezone two parcels of land, we're looking at a total of 3.19 acres. And I just want to start by saying, so the Residential Village District was created for homes of water and sewer connection points. At this point, Bradford Street has reached that point where it has water and sewer connection points, right? So realistically, we are not looking, and, and the language that was presented at last town meeting was that there was going to be 10 to 13 potential buildable lots out there. That is not the case. This is for three buildable lots, is to maintain the overall character of what is currently exists in the Residential Village District. It's just to maintain that character and prevent any other impacts to the town of some future development that I've heard, that could be potentially occurring. Seeing that it would only be three buildable lots, let's say two, two cars per lot, we're looking at six, six cars traveling up and down Pembroke Ave to, to utilize Bradford Street and utilize Pembroke Street, which isn't, isn't going to be a, a traffic issue to my knowledge on, on, on Pembroke Ave. I think it's, it's a benefit to the town. It is a contaminated piece of land as it sits, lot 482. That being contaminated piece of land, there is, people are looking to develop it, it's part of being able to develop it, it's having the correct number of house lots there to recuperate their investment. to recuperate their investment in order to bring that soil condition back to residential standards, which some of the board members know is a very costly task. Beyond that, I, I just think it makes sense being able to rectify the issues that we currently have within our zoning and just create some cohesion overall.
Okay, questions? Let's start with you, Dave. Got any questions?
How did you, isn't it three lots on 482?
Yeah, yep, they're already built. Just three houses there already.
Nope, so actually the residential village zoning district cuts right down Bradford Street. So on the other half of Bradford Street, it's actually Residential A. So there are three houses that have been built.
On the right side.
Correct.
So it'd be three more on the left.
Three to four depending on the land area and what buildable lot that they have right now.
So my question is, we're including 534 in the article.
Yes. We can't just rezone one lot.
Okay, but wouldn't that possibly create?
If that 534 was to be developed, they'd have to go through the complete subdivision process. Anything, any improvements, any traffic studies that need to be conducted at that time would go through the complete subdivision process.
Okay, so the zoning, so just so I'm clear.
Yep.
The zoning change only creates three new lots now.
Now, yeah, absolutely.
There are potential for others, but that would be a definitive subdivision.
That would be a whole process with numerous different studies that are included. A lot of engineering that has to be done in the road.
Yeah, shoes with it being connected to the other street. I remember the talk about it, so I'm good with the article.
Now, that other, that other parcel, which district would that be in again?
Which one?
After this zoning change?
534.
The, beyond the three lots that this would allow?
That would still maintain as Residential A district.
Oh, with the large lots?
Yes, so it'd be a 6,000, 60,000 square foot lot. And just looking at the lot on the other side of 482 is actually a residence as it is from what I was able to view it from GIS. Beyond that, once you get past that lot, it's very wet, so there's buildable potential out there. And then on the other side of that other lot is Wing Road, and that's where they have the solar field.
I mean, it's large lot residential zoning after that.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Brian?
Steve? I think I'm good. I think we're over there. We asked of sewer, the sewer goes up beyond Bradford Street now right up to, right up to the other side. What we had was the only real concern that was having was if the system was capable of handling any additional lots up over there.
Yep, every conversation I've had with Dan Menard, who is very familiar with it, he has given me every indication that the addition of three lots over there would be able to handle the improvements that have currently been, been done over on Bradford Street.
As far as I'm concerned, if sewer and water can handle the three houses, I don't think three houses with the vehicles would be a burden on Pembroke. As far as I'm concerned, I think I'm fine with it.
I want to speak.
You are next.
Hi, I'm a lifelong resident of Pembroke Avenue. I've lived in my entire life. I roller skated and everything on Pembroke. I just wanted to let you know, I think you are endangering the community. The last warrant said 13 houses. And then Mr. Trehan cuts up and he says, oh, that's a mistake. Well, if you change the bylaw to change it to, what am I going to say? Redistricting the area, what is to say that Mr. Trehan's grandson doesn't decide, oh, I'll build the next 10 houses like I was planning to, but they stopped me? I know the fiasco that happened at PJ Keaton when it was changed to industrial and the neighbors are going crazy. I don't want the same thing to happen on Pembroke. It's a safety issue. I want you or some of you to walk up Pembroke Avenue any time of the day when two cars are coming up and down. I'm a runner. I've almost got hit. I can't tell you how many times. There's no sidewalk, which I understand there wouldn't be. It's a little tiny street. But the safety is so bad. I have a two-year-old granddaughter. When I walk the carriage up the street, I'm at my wits. Because if cars coming down, a car's going up, if one of these cars do not stop, they're going to hit, hit me in the carriage. I'm not against building in Akushnet. There's plenty of land in Akushnet. Why? They chose this area. I know why, because it used to be a junkyard. He got the land dirt cheap and he wants to build houses, which I understand is good for the town. The income is good, but my concern is the safety of the community. And some wise ass said, oh, what is it, a nursery school on that street? No, there isn't a nursery school, but there's a lot of children on that street and a lot of people that have lived there their entire life. Why do they want to rezone this area? That's my concern. It isn't for the three houses. Young Tyler telling me it's for the three houses. It's because he wants to put 10 more houses back there.
That's not the case.
Then why was it on the warrant? Why was it on the warrant?
Because from a planning standpoint, I was looking at 10 to 13 to have two lots there.
Well, I go up that street all the time. I'm a runner. They put the three houses on the other side on Bradford. This side of Bradford, there's nothing on, there's a trail there right now that I guess they have to get rid of the trail before they can build there. And Bradford Street only goes to a little part of, there's a house that's going to be sitting right on Bradford Street. So if they're going to put houses on that street, it's, I just don't understand why you would even allow them to think about rezoning that area. Why do you have to rezone that area? So they can grow more houses?
So I, I guess I'll, there's, there's three options moving forward with that parcel of land. We move forward, it gets rezoned, you have the same character that's already in the neighborhood of just.
But then you have the quarry.
Hold on. Your option number two, the zone is not passed forward. At that point, the developer or any person that does own the land back there can approach the town with a 40B plan. The town has no say in what a 40B plan looks like. That goes straight to the state and we have no control over that. And we're looking at 40 to 60 units that would be built on that one parcel of land. And then if that's the case, that is an increase of a lot more traffic. That would require a lot more improvements.
But if you don't change the rezoning, nothing can happen.
It doesn't matter.
Yes, it does matter.
40B bypasses any zoning regulations. It goes straight to the state.
I think what he's trying to say is that something's going to happen there. The developer is not going to build.
Well, when somebody gets killed, I'll come to you, or you, or you, or you, or you, or you and blame you because you need to come on Pembroke and see how terrible that street is. It's a little night, tiny little street that needs work, by the way.
Well, I think that's where we ought to go with it as a town. We have a DPW who is, they're capable of building their own streets. They have a road grader. They would purchase as a town a road grader. The, the road should be a minimum of 20 feet in width, just for public safety, whether any houses are built anyway, 20 feet. So if the road is 12 or 14, then it should be widened. And I think that we should consult with the DPW. We're, you know, slowly with Chapter 90 money rebuilding the roads.
Right, which I know Pembroke is one of them.
Well, there's nothing that says that when they redo that road, it isn't done right, which means widen it to the end and maybe put a hammerhead turnaround. There's not even a turnaround for a fire truck. So there are improvements to that road that should be made. I agree with you.
My concern is, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
But we can't prevent, we can't just stop trying to create more tax base, increase our tax base. And the logical areas are where there is sewer and water, and there is sewer and water. Now, let's say if the road was widened and fixed properly, would you be okay with it?
I still, the reason we have a problem is everyone uses Pembroke, and I've stopped many people. How come you're coming up Pembroke? Well, we want to, don't want to stop at the town hall, which I see. You come, I'd love you to sit at my house one day and see what goes on in Pembroke. There's a drag strip. Before my husband died, he said, I don't like to throw tax out on the road because of the drag strip. I just think for public safety, everybody wants a dollar, and I understand that. But you're going to take people's lives over a dollar? I've been in the medical field for 40 years and I've seen many people die that I would have liked to save, that I couldn't save. But this is an area we can save the people. Why were so many people upset at the last town meeting about it? I'm sure they were, people are afraid to speak. I'm not afraid to speak. I believe in my heart. People are the most important part of my life. Money doesn't mean a whole lot. When I die, no one's going to say, oh, she had $100,000. My concern is the safety of the community. That is my concern. And there is so much land in Akushnet that people can build on. Why pick this little piece of property up the street where there's just a small little community, the road is a terrible road? I just, I just don't understand why it has to be rezoned. It's been this zone for, my parents lived there for 80 years. It's been that way for 80 years. Now, all of a sudden, because someone prominent wants to build more houses up there and has enough pull to get people to agree to it. I'm really upset with.
I have to tell you, my, my vote is, I don't, I don't know the man from a hole in the wall. I know, I know the name. I heard the name. Doesn't mean anything to me. Doesn't matter if you wanted to do it. To me, it's logical planning and that's why I support it. And I can tell you this much, why was it nine to 13 lots? Simply somebody did a calculation. When you take the area of that 482, it's 7,000.
I know exactly where it is.
Divided by 10 is 7, and you take the other one, you have 60, divided by 10 is 6. You add them together, you have 13 lots. It's not feasible to do that because there's only so much furniture. You'd have to create roads within that spur off of the road and there's no logic to that.
To me, once you open a can of worms, the worms just come out. And I'm afraid that's exactly what will happen by doing that. And like I said, I know there's plenty of land. I have another piece of land in Akushnet way out. There's plenty of land that needs to be rebuilt. Why pick this property that the junkyard was at for 100 years? I mean, I just think you have to think about the community and that's my concern. It's the community, the people that live on it. I'm going to be dead in 40 years, so it doesn't matter to me. I mean, I'm 59 years old, so in 40 years I'll be dead and the other people will still be there. But I'm just concerned with the safety of the people in the community. And I just don't understand why an area has to be changed that's been that way for 100 years or more. What is the big deal about changing that? Why can't it just stay what it is? If you can build on it anyway, why change it? You have to make me understand. By not changing it, you can't build, but by changing it, you can?
If, if, if I could just intercheck for a minute, I if, if there is any bit of available upland, especially with a water or sewer connection, water and sewer make it possible to do higher density developments. Right now, the town is under pressure from the state to develop affordable housing. That means high-density multifamily housing. I would heard that from Doug just last, at our last meeting. The, the state wants every town to have, what is it, 10% of their total housing to be affordable housing?
Once MBTA station opens in New Bedford, we qualify as an adjacent community. That means we are going to have to rezone for 10% of the overall housing stock. That is about 4,000 to 4,500 units, so we're looking at 450 units. That's 15 units per acre.
Okay, and, and so what that means is that irregardless of what the zoning is today, any lot that has the availability of sewer and water can, can support this high-density usage. Is it going to happen tomorrow? I don't know. Is it going to happen with this developer? I don't know. But if the land has water and sewer and it is developable, meaning upland, not wetland, it's a prime candidate for what's called, it's called a 40B application. But what it means is a 40B application to the state, and we've got one in town right now. It supersedes all local zoning bylaws, period. So we don't have to change anything and it can still be a 40B parcel with high-density development, 15 units per acre and more. If it's three houses and they're built, there's no possibility of a 40B there. That's, that is one advantage to quote the three houses.
The three houses that are present right there?
No, no, the three, the new three houses that the rezoning would allow. Without the rezoning, the 40B is still available as an alternative. And with water and sewer and the town being pressured to develop more high-density affordable housing, that's a place to do it. So we cannot do the zoning, but you still have that, that thing to contend with and you'll have a state process to deal with in terms of trying to fight the state who wants us to have more high-density affordable housing. That's, that's one of the reasons. I'm not saying it's a reason that you should, you know, put your arms around a rezoning, but it, to have three more houses there does protect against having a higher-density multifamily place. It, it does do that.
I just have one other thing to say. The sewerage was put in after he bought this property. In his brain, he knew what he was doing because that sewerage is all new.
And quite honestly, as Doug said earlier, originally, that was what set the limit of, of where this higher density or in terms of housing was allowed is that it was a place where water and sewer was available. It wasn't, I don't know, 30 years ago when that line was drawn, but, but it is today. And, and that's the good part and the bad part about a sewer is it certainly makes it a lot easier to have houses on smaller lots. But on the other hand, it also opens up any parcel of any size to a 40B application.
And I do understand that.
That's all.
I just, I'm just concerned how busy Pembroke Avenue is.
And, and I share your concern and, and my, from, from my end, my concern is that I would rather see it be three houses than 15 or 30.
I'm just not.
You're smiling.
I'm just not convinced it's not going to happen.
Listen, please, just listen to me. This is not an idle concern. This is, we have 40B projects in town. We will have more as the pressure from the state increases for 40B and as the sewer keeps getting extended. Every time the sewer gets extended to an area that has developable upland, there's a potential for a 40B project. That's all. I mean, that's all I'm saying.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not saying it should convince you to embrace the rezoning, but I'm, I just want to let you know that that is one of the considerations that, that we have to make as a board.
And I understand. I'm very bored of it.
Do we want to have a parcel that has the option of 30 units or three?
If, if you could tell me that there was only going to be three more, I'd agree with you. But God is, I know for a fact, once that gets in there, you're going to have more houses put up there and Pembroke is going to be inundated with hundreds more cars. It's bad enough now.
They're going to have to come to us for that.
I understand that and I, I appreciate you letting me speak.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to cut you off again. I'd be glad to look at it. Come in with a plan and show me how you can put, you know, 10, 15 houses in there with a wetlands delineation and all the other things that need to be done to, to develop that parcel. I, I, and, and it's not really a challenge because based on the stuff that I've seen in terms of wetlands, especially wetlands, it's, the possibility for 10 or 15 house lots is just not there, period. It just isn't.
Go up to the top of Pembroke where there used to be a junkyard. That is not wet back there. They had horses back there years ago. I knew the people, the Cambras who lived there who lost the property. There are areas in that area that I'm sure if they bring the sewerage up a little farther, up Pembroke, they're going to be able to build more houses. If they have to come to you and you have to approve it, then I understand. But I just see what's happened before in town. I'm not against the quarry, by the way. But I saw what happened when the quarry was changed from residential to industrial and the fiasco that's going on there now. I just don't want to see it happen in my own backyard.
And I can understand.
We, we understand.
We understand.
We understand. I mean, I, I, I've lived in town for over 60 years. There are three major subdivisions around where I live now. I, I understand what you're talking about and I, I'm glad that those houses are there rather than 40Bs, but there's no sewer out there, so that's not an issue. Unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, sewer is available up there and, and that's just another consideration we have to make.
All right, well, I understand. I'm, I'm just concerned about the safety more than anything else, honestly.
We heard your concerns. This is a public meeting. There's no votes are going to be taken tonight. This is just.
I'm sorry to ramble.
No, we, we got, we got your point. I'm hoping that the board was able to clarify anything that you might, any questions that you might have had. We do, I think we might have other people that might bring up other questions. So I'm going to, unless you have anything else?
I just wish I took a picture today of the bus coming down Pembroke and a car trying to come up Pembroke. There's no way they could have even passed away.
I totally, I totally understand.
Okay, I'm sorry for bothering you. I don't mean to be mean.
Have you ever been down Lake Street? I live on, I live on Lake Street.
My best friend Gerard's lived on.
Barely 16 feet wide.
Right.
There's two-way traffic.
Oh, I know.
And, and not only is there two-way traffic, but compared to thirty-five years ago, when I moved, when I was on the lot that I am now, the traffic is phenomenal. It is non-stop, back and forth down Lake Street. The, I've seen multiple accidents. I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from.
I don't wanna see accidents.
I do, I do, I do.
I don't wanna see accidents.
I, I understand.
Thank you for your time, I'm sorry for being a pain in the neck, but I just wanted to get how I feel about the emergency card about it.
Nope.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you very much.
There were some questions in the chat, and then somebody does have their hand up, so we can go to the person with their hand up.
Uh, Jamie, you there, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. As far as them building these houses, how come they're building these houses without permits first? And none of the stuff's getting inspected by the building inspector?
They have a foundation permit in place for the three houses already built.
I mean, honestly, sir, I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't wanna stop anybody, but that, that's not our issue here tonight. If you've got an issue with buildings' permits being issued, you have, you've gotta take that up with the building department.
That's the supplement that you're trying to rezone for the same developer that's building all these houses.
Where, we're not doing a rezoning for any one person.
For the other three foundations?
It's just, it's one way to protect that property from a forty-B application.
Which is probably mean a lot more than three-house lots up there.
And if there are any issues that you feel there are with permits, you would need to talk to the building inspector regarding that.
On the other side, there's nothing. What, map four eighty-two and map fifteen five thirty-four put on the agenda without list Pembroke Avenue? So, nobody can see it?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all that, could you repeat that, please?
Fifteen four eighty-two and map fifteen five thirty-four will put on the agenda, on this agenda, without Pembroke Avenue even being listed. And somebody, nah.
Pembroke Avenue is listed on the map on the front. For the, for the warrant article, or for the article.
The Donald Kushner public meeting agenda does not...
He's talking about the agenda that we have in front of us right now.
Why doesn't it specify Pembroke?
Why is it specified that it's Pembroke? Or the lots are on Pembroke?
Yeah, the lots are on Pembroke, to the best of my knowledge. This is on Bradford Street to move the, the zoning, so the other side of Bradford Street is incorporated.
Right, no, it's not listed as Bradford Street on there or anything else, if you're reading it. And the assessor's office told me today that it is listed as ninety-one Pembroke and ninety Pembroke.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not aware of that, I'll have Doug look into that, and, and make any changes necessary.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we can bring that up at the town meeting, when we have the town meeting coming up. Anybody else have any questions?
Heather?
I just have a question, is that the paper road going from Nelson Ave, are they doing anything with that?
No.
Over this?
Nope, that, that is privately owned, there's no, no intentions of developing that. And it, it's just a lot that's being rezoned, if they do look to move forward with doing any sort of development there, it's already extremely narrow, so they would have to go through the complete subdivision process. If it's inadequate for them to develop it, then it would be inadequate for them to develop it, and develop it, and they wouldn't be able to move forward with the project.
Okay, 'cause I'm on Christmas Street, and that would be, I have a lot of, like, my land's basically, like, right off of the paper road.
Yes. I, we're not...
That's why...
Yep, it, it'd be the lot, obviously Nelson, the paper street Nelson Ave does about the lot, but if, if it's not feasible option for them to develop it, then they wouldn't be able to develop it.
Okay, so there's no, you're not building a road on that paper road?
No, it, it, the Bradford Street's already built, it, it's the other, other half of it, 'cause zoning cuts right through the middle of Bradford Street.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Welcome. Anybody else out there?
Yeah, I had another question, why don't they rezone just the four eighty-two, to make sure it is only three houses?
'Cause that's spot zoning, sir, if we spot zone, it's not gonna be approved, and we have to include at least one other parcel with it.
Okay, so, so why didn't they do that, because they built the road, and send the butters letters to the butters that live next to that property?
Yeah, I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Before they developed Bradford Street, why were there not any butters' letters sent to any of the butters?
Because it wasn't developed under a subdivision process, it was developed under A&R Plan of Land, which does not require a butter notification.
Okay, so, they developed it all, then they came to you and said that they wanted to build houses, and then you rezoned it?
Not, not precisely, we're, we're trying to rectify some, some issues within our current zoning, and, and for future planning.
I mean, the only, the only reason that there's a jog in the zoning line there, I mean, it is very evident, when you look at the whole zoning line, is that there was no, no sewer available up there at that time. I mean, you could still, actually, without any rezoning, they could still do one house.
What about the contaminated soil, why didn't they clean that up first?
That's not what this issue's about.
He has nothing to do with that, he's gonna eventually have to clean that all up before anything gets done on that.
And there was something to do with a surety for thirty-five thousand dollars, wasn't that supposed to be done before he even developed that road?
It wasn't, that would be done through a subdivision process, we were not required to have him post a surety. He, he, he came forward through speaking with me, and I had asked him to post a surety with the town. We have entered into an agreement for him to post cash surety for it, but that does not relate to the rezoning of the parcel.
Yeah, but this, this is, this is when he built the road, he, he, he actually did that after the fact.
Once again, that would be through the subdivision process, that we would require cash surety or covenant of lots. 'Cause it was done through A&R, we did not secure any sort of funding to ensure that the roadway was completed.
Anything else?
That's it for now.
Okay.
Anybody else out there in Zoom land? Okay. Can I get a motion?
May I make a comment?
Please, sure.
Um, my question is, okay, so the rezoning is happening, and I looked at that parcel on the map, and it shows a continuance of Bradford Street on the left side of Pembroke, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, there's, there is a paper street on the left side, correct.
All right, so is that what, uh, that, the builder wants to develop on that side as well?
No, they do not own that.
They don't own it, we have to include two parcels for it not to be considered spot zoning. If it's a spot zoning article, then it would not be approved by the attorney general's office.
Okay, so, so how many more houses are gonna go on Bradford Street, on the side where the junkyard is?
It's gonna be three lots that are being added.
We're being told it's three lots.
There's, there's three houses on there now, so there's gonna be three more houses, is that...
On the, yes, on the opposite side of the three houses, actually, yes.
That road isn't even wide enough for three houses, though. So that would be six houses complete on Bradford Street, am I right?
On the right, on the, on the, the right side, yes.
Right, that street.
Once the lot, once the lots cleaned up, the lot has to be cleaned up first. I mean, with, without, without the cleanup being done, there's no houses on that side of the street, period. I mean, it's just, you cannot put residential development on that kind of contaminated land, period. So, he's, he's, in order for anybody, forty-B application, single-family houses, residential development, it's got to be cleaned up per the state requirements before anybody can do that kind of building there.
And, and who, who would pay for that kind of cleanup?
Whoever wants to do the forty-B or the new houses.
The owner of the parcel would be required to clean it up.
The alternative is they abandon the property.
Okay, so as it stands right now, it's the three houses, and the rezoning has to include two other properties on the other side of Bradford Street, um, in order to rezone this?
So, it's including two parcels, it's including the one across the street from what Bradford Street is existing, and with that being rezoned, they'd have the potential for four house lots. As it stands, they have one house lot, so this would be the creation of four.
Okay, so where would that, where would that four, fourth house go?
It would fit all in that one four eighty-two parcel. On the cross the other street at the lot five thirty-four, there is nothing that's, that is there. They would have to go through the subdivision process, so we had to include those two parcels of land in order for it not to be considered spot zoning.
Okay, I think I understand clearly, thank you for answering my question.
You're welcome. Anybody else out there?
Can I just ask one thing? You said that there, that the six houses are going on the right-hand side of Bradford Street?
Six.
Well, three and three.
Well, it ended up being, so they got three, and then they currently have one bulge block
on the other side, and then this would create the, this would allow them to have an additional three on that side. So, on the left side, where Bradford Street isn't there right now, there's a trailer there right now?
Yes, and it's privately owned.
So, Bradford Street is not going to go right, right across, so we can build on that side?
No, that would have to go through the complete subdivision process.
And this, this rezoning article is really got nothing to do with the status of how developable that piece of land is.
And what makes the difference between, um, house lots versus, um, a development? Just my own knowledge.
So, uh, but, house lots are different, because it has to be considered off of an acceptable way, and that's where it comes into going through the A&R process, where they, they essentially create lot lines through the A&R process. So they have an acceptable way as of Bradford Street. In comparison, when they're building a roadway and creating house lots, that's when they would have to go through the subdivision process. And as it stands, they don't have an acceptable frontage on, on an approved way to be able to move forward with that.
Okay, I just was unsure how that is about that, if I get it answered.
We've, we've had a lot of discussion about what constitutes, uh, frontage that you can build a house on these days.
Right.
And, and, honest to God, I wish it was simpler. But the, the state has got a publication called the, the A&R, uh, what do they call it now?
A&R Handbook.
The A&R Handbook. It's eighty-two pages long.
Like the government, just like the government.
I, I, I mean, I, it's, we still debate over what some of the pieces of that eighty-two pages mean. And that whole eighty-two pages, it's based on one line in the State Zoning Enabling Act that says, "A&R, A&R approval or approval not required must not be withheld unless the plan shows a subdivision." That's it.
Okay.
And we've got eighty-two pages and seventy years of court history on that one line. So I wish, I wish I could simplify it.
So I'll buy a tiny house and put it on my other part of my property, and I'll be all set. One of those little tiny houses, and I'll move in and rent my house out. Thank you for asking.
I saw a comment, there was a comment in the chat that forty-B housing is subsidiary housing. That isn't necessarily accurate. Forty-B housing is essentially a affordable housing aspect. An affordable housing in consideration of the state of Massachusetts is eighty percent of the median income. I qualify for that, your police officers qualify for that, your teachers qualify for that. Yes, um, so...
So it's not gonna be low-income people, is what you're saying?
No, but they, they can accept section eight, uh, section eight vouchers. But essentially, when they do go through a forty-B process, only twenty to twenty-five percent of the units in that development have to be affordable units.
Okay, that makes sense.
They could, they could directly put apartment buildings on, on that parcel.
Can they put trailers? I know the town has objected trailers now, I know there are trailers in town, but could they put trailers on that property as well?
I've, I've seen plans for a, a forty to sixty unit, three-story building through the forty-B process, that would be potentially gone through with the state.
I'm sorry for being a pain.
Oh, no.
It's just my town, I've grown up here, I went to school here, and I just wanna see it stay.
It's a public hearing.
That's what we hit for.
And, and we don't know what the neighbors' concerns are unless they speak up.
And everyone's afraid to speak up.
Well, I, I mean, not that we can, within the confines of what we're able to do legally, you know, we can't always accommodate everybody's, uh, issues. But we do, we do the best we can.
And at least I have ears to listen. I'm thankful, I'm glad you did, I appreciate it, I feel better. Thank you very much for your time.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We have another question.
Is there another question, uh, out there?
Hi, uh, I would like to have clarification on what the plan is, widening the road.
It's...
Which road?
Pembroke.
That is, that's not an issue that's relative to this public hearing, you know, I, I'm sorry.
No, that's absolutely true, no, thank you, thank you for saying that, that's not what we're here to discuss. We're here to discuss the rezoning, uh, to the residential district. That would have to go to DPW or...
So, I mean, that person, you're gonna go to the selectman and request that some work be done there. And that's, that's, that's a whole other avenue. We really have nothing to do with the improvement of existing streets, basically, for authority, especially there.
I make a motion to continue this on next week, the twenty-ninth meeting?
So moved, I mean, our second, sorry, second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Uh, next on the agenda is also continuing public hearing.
So we have a public hearing, but I, I just wanna speak on it briefly. So I did receive a, um, email, and I had a phone call developer that had asked for a continuation. We discussed some of the available planning board dates for meetings, it is looking like October twentieth would be the most likely, that they're gonna move forward with that.
Good, so that, does that require one public hearing, it's gonna carry two?
That would, that all is dependent on what gets discussed at the public hearing. If the board decides that it, it's required to continue at that point, then it would have to be continued at that point.
Thank you. And from what I understand, from the latest town council ruling, that's our option. As to whether we decide it's important enough to require another public hearing, and to go through a formal amendment process.
Make a motion to come out of public meeting and back into regular meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Unanimous.
Do we need to continue then?
We, there is to be a motion to, to postpone or continue it until October twentieth.
I'll make a motion to postpone the hearing of that case to October twentieth, as requested by the applicant's representatives.
Do a second?
Second.
All in favor? Doug, I know that you are working on the master plan, I know you're working on open space and recreation plan, uh, unless you wanna talk about it?
Yeah, I mean, there's, just, I'll go current planning stuff, I'm still preparing now that I have a little bit more time with the zoning articles kind of more set in stone. I'm still working on the creation of the planning process checklist. I think you guys kind of addressed one of the questions I had about the A&R requirements and needing to have a checklist for that, and a process, kind of spreadsheet laying out what that looks like moving forward. Touch on the master plan, open space and recreation plan. We're also looking at doing a housing plan and possibly economic development plan. So, a lot of those are, our master plan, I'd just call it as an umbrella, and a lot of those underplans fall under that umbrella. So our master plan went out of date, or it was created and approved in two thousand eight. Our open space and recreation plan was approved in two thousand one. The housing plan was, uh, completed in two thousand nineteen and goes out of date next year. And there's also a CPC plan that needs to be completed. And that just kind of guides the CPC on how they're gonna be utilizing their funds moving forward. At this time, I've been working with Jamie, the selectman, we do have about fifty thousand from, from, I guess, grants you would call them, from the state, to move forward with a portion of it. We're looking at... We're looking at securing some other funding through the CPC to, to secure some other parts of the, the master plan. And then we do have forty hours of available work from SERPAD that we look at utilizing to help in, in the creation of the plan. So that's where we're at. I have started drafting an RFP to, to bring in outside consultant in to assist in the, in the formulation of this. I, I would be asking the community to, to provide feedback once we get to that point when we need to formulate a master plan steering committee. We're looking at about a year or two process to do a, a, a well-written one, especially being able to address the, the concerns with the MBTA community coming, what the rezoning is gonna look like for that. Water and sewer extensions, where we'd like to see that. Just hit all the overall goals that the community wants to see. This is just kinda create the, the framework for our town leadership, for your selectmen, for your planning board, for any board members of what they wanna see for the next ten years from the community and what needs to be done. There's certain zoning recommendations that get placed into the master plan. Realistically, within two to three years, those zoning recommendations need to be acted on. So that's kinda my piece to it right now. We are, we're in the process of, like I said, preparing an RFP. We'll be keeping the board up to date with that one, that, once that's all, all established.
Okay. Uh, moving along, any other business? Gentlemen, is there anything you'd like to bring up and discuss? Rick, you good?
Nope, I'm all set.
Brian, you good? Dave's good. I'm assuming Stephen's good. You have to step out for a quick second. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.